I filed with the Court my proposed distribution plan. That is my proposal to set the framework for a number of things. First, what will be included in a claim? Second, how refunds to members will be calculated? And third, a number of other issues that we need to put the proposed plan into effect from a legal perspective. In this town hall, I'm going to cover the key features of my proposed plan and then answer some questions we've received. First, I'm going to discuss what's included in a member's claim. Second, I'm going to explain how we are calculating refunds to members referred to in the plan file and is subject to change until the Court makes a decision. I've already started going over the feedback we've received in the user portal. You have until August 26th to submit that. You'll see a box to do that at the top of your user portal when you log in. I'll submit that in the period to the Court on September 10th with all your personal information removed. It's all going to be anonymous. And that's when the other response briefs are due from the CFDC and from Mr. Alexander as well. Applied briefs are due September 27th, after which the Court will have the plan fully submitted for decision. I just want to emphasize, feedback is totally optional and won't affect your distribution in any way. Critical feedback is perfectly fine and will remain anonymous. Other than removing personal information or inappropriate language, we will generally submit the feedback as is to the Court. So let's now start with what makes up a member's claim. We are looking at actual money in and actual money out of IMINIFX. Sometimes that money was deposited as Bitcoin, mostly using CoinPens. Sometimes that money was deposited as cash at a bank or wired to the bank. Sometimes that money was given as actual cash currency to IMINIFX personnel. And those are the kind of deposits that we're looking to validate and credit to members. We are also going to take withdrawals into account. Withdrawals were paid from the large pool of money that was funded only with new deposits from other members. And so given that, I'll explain exactly how withdrawals work with refunds a bit later in the program. What we are not including in a claim is the weekly ROI. That number was set at between 5.00 and 9.99% every week by IMINIFX and added to members' account balances. The problem, as I've explained in previous town halls and you can see on this channel, is that those so-called returns were not connected to any IMINIFX investments. IMINIFX paid over $260 million in ROI by increasing account balances. But IMINIFX's actual investments lost over $50 million plus millions of dollars in costs. And so because the ROI was not real and because withdrawals of ROI were paid only with new deposits from other members as in a Ponzi scheme, that ROI is not going to be part of a claim under my proposal. We are also not including in a claim the referral and sponsor bonuses. And these bonuses were prepared in a somewhat complex manner with names like immediate direct referral bonuses, immediate indirect referral bonuses, profit pairing bonuses, and so on. Because these bonuses were part of the overall scheme and withdrawals of these bonuses were funded again only with new deposits from other members as in a pyramid scheme, those bonuses are also not going to be part of the claim under my proposed plan. What we're including and not including in a claim is based on principles of fairness and equity. And as a federal equity receiver, that is my job. And in my judgment, it is simply not fair to all the members to pay some members bonuses and fictitious profits when all members are only going to receive a partial refund of the deposits they made in the proposed distribution plan. And we've received a number of questions on internal transfers. And I'm going to cover that in detail later in the program. As many people have noticed, we are generally not counting internal transfers between members. But I want to make clear there were a number of cash transactions where actual money went into IMINIFX. And then there was an IMINIFX internal transfer to complete that transaction on the backend. Now, if we can see and validate actual cash coming into IMINIFX, we are working to credit those transactions. And I will also say that the members' interaction with the user portal has been tremendously helpful to help for us in validating those types of transactions. Let's turn now to how we calculate distributions. This is a little complex, but I'm going to try to make it as simple as I can for this video. But I encourage everyone to go to the website at iminifxreceivership.com. There's a distribution plan page and there's a chart that has some examples that may also be helpful for you to see. But why don't we start with how we calculate the percentage? So we start with an initial distribution percentage and I'll set that sometime probably the end of this year. This is the rising tide percentage that will increase over time. Then we take that distribution percentage and multiply it by the total deposits the user made and then we subtract any withdrawals. So that's a lot, but let's start with the simplest calculation. Members with no withdrawals, and that's by far most members. We take the distribution percentage and multiply it by the total deposits. So if a member deposited $8,000 in January, $2,000 in March, they would have a total of $10,000 in deposits and no withdrawals in this example. So if the distribution percentage is set at 30%, at least to start with, that member to start with will get a $3,000 distribution under their proposed plan because 30% of 10,000 is 3,000. Now, I expect that I will increase the distribution percentage from time to time. And I'll explain a little about why that is in a moment. But that's what IMINIFX is rising tide, is it's rising. The distribution percentage rises over time. So to keep going with this example, if the percentage starts at 30% and goes up to 40%, that's an additional 10%, it's 10% more, it's an increase. And so the member who deposited $10,000 and already received $3,000 will now get an additional distribution of $1,000 and it's a total of $4,000. So the member in this case is deposited $10,000, received 30% in the first distribution and 10% in the second distribution, that's 3,000 and 10,000 for a total of 4,000. And that's for numbers who only have deposits. Some users have also received withdrawals. I have proposed a rising tide plan, which means withdrawals are treated like advances on distributions. So if we go back to the same example, the user who made $10,000 in deposits. But let's say that member also actually did withdraw and they withdrew $2,000. So they deposited 10, but they withdrew 2,000 before IMINIFX was shut down. If the distribution percentage is 30%, that member should get a $3,000 refund. But they already received $2,000 before the shutdown, which means that to get to 3,000, they need an additional $1,000 on top of the two they already received to get to a total refund of $3,000. Now, that's a lot of numbers. If you visit our website again at iminifxreceivership.com and you go to the distribution plan page, we've got a chart that shows you how this works with a few examples. We considered and did not use a net investment plan. We explained this in the distribution plan and on the website as well. I'm not going to get too into those details because it gets very technical. But I can say that for users who do not have withdrawals and they get, that is again, most users, the distribution percentage under rising tide is higher than under net investment. And so what that means is, under rising tide, users who didn't withdraw any money before IMINIFX was shut down and I was appointed, they'll get more money under a rising tide plan if you didn't withdraw any money before the shutdown. Again, through our website, you'll see more information about how that works. So we've talked about multiple distributions and that's part of the plan. One question we've received is, why are we doing it in multiple distributions? Why do I do everything all at once? And the reason is, I need to reserve funds. So I need to set aside funds to make sure that the receivership can satisfy all of its obligations. There's two big buckets for reserves. The first is disputed transactions. We're completing our review of the many thousands of disputed transactions. We've been able to resolve many disputes, thousands of transactions. And that usually means we've been able to validate a deposit that a member added, which means it was part of their claim now. We still expect that about 10% to 15% of members will still have disputed transactions that will need to be resolved. And some of those may need to be submitted to the Court for resolution if we can't come to an agreement as part of this process. The process of disputing transactions will only affect those members who continue to have those disputed transactions. So we're only going through dispute process if there are those, if there are transactions to dispute. But if you're in the 85% to 90% of members who don't have any disputed transactions, then you will, they will be able to get a distribution as soon as we can. And in this process, I don't want to have the 10% to 15% who we still need to work out to hold up the 85% to 90% of members who are ready for distribution now. But what that means is, I need to set aside money for the 10% to 15% while we work those disputes out. And I have to account for the fact that the receiver, the Court might agree with me, the Court might agree with the member, or I might agree with the member if, say, the member gives additional documentation that delegates their transaction. And as we go through that process, I need to make sure we have enough money to set aside to pay those disputing members too because they're also eligible, they will also become, once the disputes are resolved, eligible for distribution. And we need to make sure that they can get paid the same amount as everybody else under the point of the proposed plan. We're going to have a separate town hall that's going to focus on claims and objections and disputed transactions in early October. We're going to use the portal to, for users to be able to interact with the disputes, to see them, to resolve them. We're going to have a roster support for methods of distribution and how you're putting your payment information. And so that, we're going to have a whole town hall in a couple of months. Once we release Pro 2.0, you get a chance to see it with all the data that we've been able to put into there, what you need to do and how you need to do it. So there will be more on that. This is just, this town hall is really just focused on the plan that we file on Friday and getting the plan approved. So I mentioned disputed transactions is the one big bucket and making sure we have enough for everyone, even the one users who are working out their transactions. But the second big bucket for reserves is taxes. We've got a lot of questions and confusion about this. There's only so much I'm really permitted to say publicly, but I'm going to do my best right now to explain what I can. Because under federal law, I have an obligation to pay taxes of both IMINIFX and the receivership. And they have priority. And that's again, as a matter of federal law, it's not something that we choose. Many of you have asked why we would have any potential liability if IMINIFX could not invest your money or if those investments, if it did exist, actually lost money. That's because of the way that IMINIFX was structured. All of the contributions, hundreds of millions of dollars that members made as deposits could be treated as revenue by the IRS. Again, that's related to IMINIFX's pre-receivership awkward structure. And that's what's causing the potential tax liability. So we're trying to use the investment losses as well as the conversion to the settlement fund when I was appointed. I remember it being too technical, but basically we're trying to take all that revenue and see if we can offset it with things like investment losses and the creation of the settlement fund. Because so much of the IMINIFX, because so many of these losses happened because of the change in value in the CoinPens account, in the Bitcoin, the CoinPens account between January and May of 2022, we have to make sure that the IRS will let us use those tens of millions of dollars of losses to eliminate as much of the tax liability as we can. But until then, we have to set aside enough money to pay taxes if we end up owing them depending on what the decision is. We have been working, as I've said in some of our status reports, with the IRS to attempt to resolve this, but that can be a very lengthy process and I cannot promise anyone outcome. I hope that the IRS agrees with us and that we can get taxes as low or even eliminate it, especially pre-receivership and even for the settlement fund for the 2023 tax year. If we can do that, we'll be able to take the money we set aside to pay taxes and distribute that money to IMINIFX members. That's again, my hope. And I want to hope, and my hope is to get as much money to members as I can. But either way, whatever result we receive with the IRS, that's going to be reported in a public filing with the Court. So we can't right now say, right now I can tell you what's appropriate to tell you right now, which is that we're going through the process, but there are taxpayer privacy issues that we need to respect. But once we have an actual result and we know what the answer is, that is going to be posted in a public filing with the Court so they're able to see what result we achieved. And then if we have reserves to release, we'll release reserves and I'll send additional money back to members if I can. I want to turn now to the convenience class. We've had some people ask questions about what this is and how this works. We have a lot of members who deposited $1,000 or less. There's a lot of members, but if you look at the total deposits, it's actually only less than 5% of the total deposits. And so we're talking about a lot, a lot of members, but not a lot of money relative to most of the other members who deposited, the other 95% plus percent of the deposits. There is an administrative cost to distributions. And so I really want to minimize the number of distributions we're making on these smaller claims in order to save a measure of cost. Under proposed plan, I'll make a one-time distribution to those members. So instead of multiple distributions over time, but in order to balance the fairness, the distribution percentage will be higher for those folks or the convenience class folks than the other members. But that's because they only receive one distribution. But on the flip side, my expectation is that that percentage will be lower than the total percentage that everyone else will receive. But that's to account for the fact that they get money earlier than others. And that's the, that's the balance that we're striking with the convenience class. This will affect a large percentage of the members, but again, it really is a very small amount of total deposits. So it doesn't really affect the amount we have available to distribute very much by having this convenience class. The most common question we've received is on the timing of distributions, which I of course understand. And the proposed plan, all responses to the plan, including the members' responses in the portal, will aggregate Mr. Alexander's response, a deceived response, all that's fully submitted to the Court on September 27th. The Court will then need some time to review the proposed plan, including all the legal briefs, so that the judge can decide the motion to approve it. Now, I cannot and I will not predict the outcome or the timing of the Court's decision. I also cannot and will not predict whether Mr. Alexander will oppose the plan or will attempt to appeal a decision the Court makes. I mentioned earlier that I'm planning to post the scheduled disputed transactions in October in your individual portals. Most members will not have disputes and will be able to set their claim suit thereafter. It is my hope that we'll be able to begin distributions before the end of the year, but to members with fully verified claims. And then we'll continue into next year after resolve the members with disputed claims and able to distribute money to them as well. For those members who have disputes, we will continue to have town halls and we'll have instructions for how to resolve those disputes, how objections will work and how they'll all work with the updated portal that we'll release in our campaign. The other question that affects everyone is how we are going to make the payments. So we're going to have a number of electronic payment options like Venmo, PayPal, Zelle, ACH. And that's going to be our preferred method of payment because it generally means quicker processing, especially for international payments. We will have the ability to send a paper check via the mail to U.S. addresses. So when we launch the portal, the revised updated portal, user portal in October, we're going to have a section right near the top where members are going to be able to enter their payment information, which will include, again, those options for Venmo, PayPal, Zelle, ACH, or an option for a paper check for U.S. addresses. And you'll be able to validate your payment information on that user portal. We'll send everyone an email with instructions for how to do that. We'll post information on the website. I'll do another town hall explainer. We might have an explainer video. We'll do as much as we can to really make sure this process is clear and open for you because we will need you to do that so that you'll be able to then get a distribution by telling us how you want. But we're going to have some options for you. And hopefully those electronic options will need it once we're ready to make a distribution. It will happen fairly quickly thereafter. Now, I mentioned at the beginning of the town hall about our internal transfers. And we have received a number of questions and some concerns about that, especially why we're not counting internal transfers from one member to another member. And again, that's because we're looking for actual money into IMINIFX and actual money out of IMINIFX. So if a person deposited cash directly into IMINIFX and that cash came into the system, those transactions are generally allowed, even if that transaction was completed by IMINIFX using the internal transfer system. And we're looking case by case to make sure that the cash deposited actually came into the IMINIFX system for those members. And for many members, we are able to find those cash deposits and we will be able to credit them when we release the updated portal in October. What we can't do is double count. So if an internal transfer is simply between two IMINIFX members, but there is no actual money going into the system, we cannot credit that as an internal transfer because we'd be assigning the same transaction, the same deposit to two members and essentially double counting it. Now, a maybe question is, we've received is, what happens when someone gave money to their upline or another member to deposit into IMINIFX? Well, that member didn't put the money into IMINIFX, as often does appear to be the case, then there's no money into IMINIFX that we can count as a deposit. That said, if the other member did put the money into IMINIFX, then that deposit will be part of their transaction law. And so it's up to them, that member, to reassign all their, or part of the deposit to you because you gave them part of that money. And we have the add member function in Portal 1.0 and we have been using that because we have a lot of responses, people really did use that to reassign the transactions that were requested. And you'll see that when we update the portal in October. Now, let's say the other member did put your money into the system, but didn't add you as a member back when we had the initial portal submissions. We are going to have an option for a brief period that we need to get done with the distribution. So it's going to be brief, but at the beginning of the revised portal, it's going to allow the other member to request, request that we reassign the transaction to you towards all the dispute. That's going to be up to the other member because in general, we are not trying to resolve disputes between members. And we will have to approve that request. We want to make sure that somebody is requesting that part of the deposit go from them to somebody else in order to resolve a dispute about an out of transaction. And we'll have more about how that will work when we launch the revised portal in October. One question members have asked us is how they will know if they are eligible for distribution. And that, I've mentioned a few times, is going to be in the updated user portal, which we're going to update around October. And that's going to indicate if members have disputed transactions or if their account is ready for distribution. When I announce the rising tide percentage, assuming the proposed plan is approved by the Court, the way that's happened too, you'll see that on your user portal. And at that point, we'll be able to distribute to members who are eligible and who have given us about payment information, which they'll be able again to do on the revised user portal that we're going to launch around October. There will be some members whose transactions are all resolved, but because of withdrawals, they withdrew more money than the distribution would be under the initial rising tide percentage. Now, if I increase the rising tide and that member becomes eligible because their withdrawals are now less, that member becomes eligible for distribution in the second round using the formula. If you go onto the website, you should be under the distribution plan. We've got our table, you'll see an example for how this works. A small number of members may have a hold placed on their account. This might be because that member was an insider or has a second account that is in that winner, which I'll discuss in a bit, or who we are otherwise investing in that number. This will not affect the vast majority of members. And if there is a hold, that information will be placed on the updated portal in October and we will be working with the folks who have holds. But again, that's not going to affect many people. We've been asked questions about interest and inflation adjustments, especially for those who brought money to invest. The short answer is no, we are not going to make interest or inflation adjustments. IMINIFX operated on relatively short time scale. We're refunding a percentage, not deposits only. And so as a result, there's really no interest or inflation. We're just trying to get back as high a percentage of the actual deposits as we can. Now, I've been asked a lot, how I'll be setting the distribution percentage. And so I'm going to start with a conservative number to make sure we have enough money set aside to pay all our obligations in the worst-case scenarios. But as we resolve those issues or if we recover additional funds, I will continue to increase the distribution percentage. And then at the end, once we're ready to close the case, I will calculate an amount for a final distribution based on how much money we have left at that point. A related question we received is about transparency generally and related to the distribution percentage in the plan generally. So when I set the distribution percentage, I will file a notice with the Court and I'll put that percentage on the website. And if I increase that percentage, I'll do the same thing. We'll also continue to file quarterly reports and other reports on our activities. All of those will be posted on our website at iminifxreceivership.com. Our receivership finance page on the website also contains a ledger of every receivership transaction in various financial reports. I did want to add that I really appreciate the questions on transparency. On our website, at the bottom of the town hall page, we have a link to the SEC's investor.gov pages. There's one on Ponzi schemes, there's one on pyramid schemes. And I've mentioned them before on town halls and I want to again encourage everyone to review those. And I want to encourage everyone to ask about transparency when considering new investments. The investor.gov website warns about investments with very hard terms by little risk and secretive, complex strategies. So again, I encourage everyone to read those webpages, especially when thinking about new investments. And they're linked to on our town halls page. We've been asked what kind of feedback we're looking for on the distribution plan. In general, it's really about the plan itself. So I think that is where the feedback is probably the most useful. That said, I am not going to tell people what they should write in the feedback. That's really up to each member who chooses to submit feedback. This is intended as a way for members to provide feedback to the plan in a way that can be read by the Court and organized and sent to the Court. But this is totally optional. And whether you submit feedback or whether you submit positive or negative feedback, doesn't matter. Not, that will not affect my treatment of your claim. The one thing I would ask though is, please don't ask questions in the feedback. If you have a question, please email iminifx@starter.com because that's how we, that's the only way we can answer you directly. The feedback is anonymous and so we really can't answer questions that are submitted in the feedback. So if you have a question, email iminifx@starter.com. So a couple more questions that we received, and I want to talk about all the issues. So first, claims. We've been asked what members should do if they haven't received an update of their claim on the portal or via email. It's totally normal, announce what's to be expected. Instead of doing a piecemeal, we're going to revise all members' transaction logs at the same time when we update the portal, hopefully in sometime in October. And so, please make sure to check your email and the website around then, and you'll be able to log on and you'll be able to see revised transaction log at the same time as all the other tens of thousands of IMINFX. Now, we've also been asked what we're going to do about people who withdrew one money than they put in. Now, I do have authority under the existing order to bring lawsuits to recover from what are called net winners if people withdrew more than they put in. I've asked in the distribution plan order for authority to settle those claims, where we ask people to give BADAQ some, about 50% of the excess of, how much more they put in, they withdrew than they put in, in exchange for a release. So the court has to rule on that framework first. But if the court approves it, we will use the revised portal to handle logistics for those, for the listeners. Then finally, I've been asked what to do if you can't log on. So if you go to our website at iminxreceivership.com and you click on user portal, you'll see a password reset link, and you can click on that and follow the instructions there. Now, if that still doesn't work, then then email iminx@stater.com and explain that you cannot log on to the portal, that you tried to reset, and the struggle claims administration folks will take it from there. I just want to thank everyone for listening to this presentation, for taking the time. We are mindful that this process does take time, and my team and I are going to remain focused.